I'm gonna hand it over to the mayor.
Good afternoon, we're gonna go ahead and call this joint commission meeting to order to Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the Palaca City Commission is called to be held on Tuesday, January 16th, 2018 at the Board of County Commissioners Meeting Chambers at 2509 Kral Avenue, Suite 100, Palaca, Florida, to commence at 6 o'clock PM. The purpose of the meeting is to hold a joint meeting of the City of Palaca Commission, Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. So, we were governing ourselves accordingly. On behalf of both Commissions, we are going to call this meeting to order. At this time, we're gonna ask everyone to please stand for our invocation and pledge. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Aria Fosten if he would come forward and give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Bow your heads. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to join together collaboratively here in Putnam County between the Putnam County Commission and the City Commission of the City of Palaca. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance, as we make decisions that are jointly going to affect the citizens at large of Putnam County. I believe that there's something great that we can do together that we could do apart. So, we're just appreciative tonight that we have two bodies that are cogeo with each other, that are welcoming to each other, that are collaborative in nature, that want to join together, do what's best for the citizens. We pray for your wisdom, we pray for your guidance, we pray for civility, in your precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. It's always a good thing to meet the incoming city manager, subject to contract negotiations, through prayer. As we continue on at this time, we'll have roll call. Striggers.
For the city, Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. McCaskill.
Here.
For the city, you have a quorum.
Do you wanna do the roll call? We can. Commissioner Libel.
Here.
Commissioner Pickens.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Goddard. We're all here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present and accounted for. At this time, we'll open the floor up for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No topic of discussion will have action taken on it. Is there anyone here for public comment? We ask you to fill out a public comment card upon your completion. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
So, you wanna go ahead and open meandering boundaries and enclaves? And I know that, you know, Mr. Over turf wanted to come up and speak on this.
Mr. Chairman, before we go, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, a point of order.
Yes, sir.
I believe we should approve our minutes from our last meeting. I'll make a motion that we approve our minutes from our last meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, we have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign? Okay, motion to move.
Nay, on the last. I have no minutes. Just pretend I'm not gonna prove them, I don't have them.
Well, that's true.
And then, partner, packet?
Four to one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My apology, sir, that the minutes did not get attached to the agenda. If it was, if it's the will of the chair, what we'll do is at the next joint session meeting, we'll bring both sets of minutes back and we'll get them approved then. My apologies on behalf of staff. They were emailed out.
You didn't get a set of minutes before him?
He never does. We're fine. But we're gonna go, that's fine, we can always come back to it if we need to. But for the purposes of this meeting, I think that, sir?
Do we need a motion to reconsider that action?
Or remove the motion?
We'll do it upon, it's already approved, so if nothing else comes in, it stays approved.
They were emailed out earlier that printed mine off.
They come in and he's got a complaint, by the time he gets it done, we can arrange a view or note his exception. But the action is already in place. So, so that we don't get bogged down with housekeeping, we're gonna continue on. We've had items eight through H of this agenda, which continue on. Mr. Over turf, you can come forward at this time and talk about mirroring the boundaries and enclaves.
Craig, good evening, Mayor, and Mr. Chairman, and fellow councilmembers. When I saw this agenda item just a few minutes ago, I said, well, I'll come down and just sort of give you some history of what we got coming up here in the next year and a half. I don't know if you all have heard much about it yet, but the federal government, of course, is already beginning the talk about the census that we'll do, or they'll do in 2020. And the reason I bring that up is because then as soon as that is completed, it will be up to you all as, as the county commission and the school board members to get with us and to decide about our new districts, because we'll have to do redistricting. And so, the reason I'm sort of addressing this more to the City of Palaca is if you all could sure help us with your city limits, it sure would be helpful, because as, as you all know, and most of the public knows, it, you know, goes in and out, and it's really makes it difficult. And the reason I mention it is because, you know, we're, we're set on a certain population in each district for you all as county commissioners. And we usually start in the southern end with Mr. Pickens and move our way forward till we hit that magic number of 14, 15, 13, whatever that thousand is. And we, you know, began to draw it precinct by precinct, so to speak, like that, and then we move into the city. And so, that's why I mentioned it, and I know, Chip, you've been here for a while, so you've, you've dealt with that before. I know you were here in 2012 when they did it the last time, of course, or 2011. And so, I'm just mentioning that so that everyone can be thinking about it, but, but especially with the City of Palaca, if you all can help us with that, the more, you know, succinct that you can get those ma, and I know, I guess you can't force people to be annexed into the city, but it sure would help us, because there are a couple of things where we've got one particular residence, and they're in the city and the area around them is not, and so we have to create something just for those people. So, I'm just sort of throwing that out to you to please be thinking about that and see if you can help us as we move forward, you know, through the census, and then especially as we start the redistricting process. We went through this in '15 because of the Corrine Brown situation and the State Supreme Court ordering the new districts. And I came in before, in front of you all and told you that we were very fortunate, because Putnam County, for the first time that I could remember in probably 40 or 50 years, every one of our positions was the whole county, with Bobby Payne, with Keith Perry, with Ted Yoho. And what I'm telling you is, we can't be sure that that'll happen again. It easily could be that because of, maybe if there's more growth in South Florida, that as they move up, they will, you know, change those districts, and we could be like Marion County that got split in about three or four ways. I sure hope not, because it sure makes it harder on us and you all too, as we start looking at those maps. But anyway, I just, I just wanted to address that for you and bring that to your attention, just saying, anything, you know, you as a city can help us with as far as trying to make it as compact and as complete as we can, it just, it sure would be helpful as we move forward. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else we're gonna, that needs to come forward as it relates to enclaves?
Are we gonna look at doing some of that annexing? Because we run in and out of the city from Palm to, at least Highway 19, or probably out to Francis now, several times, and I think we have that on our priority list, it's not at the top, but it's there.
I think one of the first things that we have to do, particularly as a city, and Mr. Suggs, you may agree with me on this, is we've got to take a careful look at our annexation policies, Mr. Holmes as well, and really determine if the longstanding annexation policies that we have need to have some tweaking in order to incentivize opportunities for people to come in voluntarily, as opposed to just forcing annexation. There are a number of enclaves, we've got a report that we've shared with the county as well, which indicates what, what are the six most critical areas. Mr. Reynolds, you're aware of the report as well, and really what the impacts are gonna be on both entities from a financial standpoint. It's a few years old now, but the numbers are pretty similar as it relates to what's in place. But I, I think one of the first steps has to be, again, looking at how we can do that, looking at our policies in-house from the city's perspective first, and figuring out if we need to soften our approach, and it may, and it may take some incentivizing both from the county and the city to get that done, because you're absolutely right. We go from city to county since then before we, from the time we leave the riverfront and get to the hospital. And if we expand out and to pass the business park, we're starting to see ourselves go as far as Francis Church and still be in city property. And so, we need to look at those things, and later on, we'll start to talk about some of the interlocals that need to be looked at as well. Any other comments?
I do.
Yes.
Mayor Hill, what would you suggest beyond the description you just gave that would get this effort off the ground? There's, there's definitely business to be made with gas, particular sewer and water by the City of Palaca, by annex and into the county. And I would very much like to see that effort in lieu of creating the wheel again when we start growing in the county, which we are in the west end, that we come up with separate water plants, sewer plants, and this sort of thing. I just, I think there's strength in numbers if we unify, and somewhere, we have to start this with a, a small commission, committee. What's your thoughts on that?
I, I think the short-term answer is to create urban service boundaries. That's different from annexing. And if we can create the urban service boundaries using interlocal as the basis for getting those things in place, then it gives us at least nothing, it gives us at least the opportunity from a pilot to be able to discover what the impacts are gonna be to a smaller scale. The enclaves that are listed in that report are probably the easiest areas. We've got both the fire department here, as well as the police department, and in many situations, the only way they can tell whether it's city or county is by looking at garbage cans. And we find duplication of services, because we've got some areas in St., for example, around Shawbuck Field, in the Lemon Heights area, for example, and in some other areas as we pass Williams Street on St. John's Avenue, we find ourselves with police and fire and the sheriff's office all coming to the same scene, and there having to be a determination on who's on call. And so, I think if we create clear urban service boundaries, looking at what's in place, we can start to deal with a lot of those issues. And, and I think that that's the easiest way. From there, long-term, we've got to look at, really the impact right now, by forcing annexation into certain areas, you're basically asking the citizen to pay an additional 6.4 meals without really any additional benefit other than the level of service, per se. And so, I, I think we have to figure out how we can consistently do that. Mr. Crowe has worked on that as well. And Thad, you wanna come up and maybe elaborate a little bit?
With that, while he's walking up, the, I can see what you're saying, but also, do you think that you and the city commission could even consider offering utilities, particularly gas at this point, within to the county, in those urban service boundaries you're talking about, no matter where they are?
The Palaca Gas Authority already offers gas to the unincorporated areas. They don't restrict their, their gas transmission lines to the municipal boundaries. Right now, it's basically done on a economic feasibility basis. They'll go into an area, make a survey, find if there appear to be enough people in that area to run a line, normally with a, with a economic model of a seven-year return on the investment. And if they have enough, or they have enough potential customers, they'll go ahead and run the line. There are also some technical issues regarding pressure and looping the lines, but they don't restrict themselves to the municipal boundaries.
Well, notice, the City of Palaca too, Mr. Holmes, has water in, you know, the county quite, very much in the urban service areas. But what, what about the possibility of sewer?
That's above my pay grade.
I, I think ultimately, there's a, there's an opportunity to provide that. I think the biggest issue is gonna be the cost of actually extending the line. And, you know, one of the things that we looked at, particularly when we looked at Comfort Road and the extensions that were in place out there, at that, you know, when we were looking at that project, it was 400 feet of sewer lines that had to be extended out on Comfort Road to reach the people in the barge port. And one of the things that we looked at was the county actually being applicant for CDBG grant for that extension. And so, we see a couple of different examples throughout the stuff that we have already, where we sell utilities to the county, and the county resales, or in some situations, we, there's a different rate for those who are not in the city limits. And so, I, I think ultimately, for us to get to a point where we have utilities in, in various areas, and we were just looking at this with Mr. Reynolds, there's about 25,000 people that can truly be affected based upon the capacities that we have in place, where we can, if we devise a plan which allows us to be able to lay water and sewer lines in areas particularly hitting, for hitting, hitting the, the commercial areas first, I think, which is the biggest part, and I've had this conversation with the chamber also, but if we can get to a point where we provide those services, then it changes the game.
I'd really like to see the infill possibilities or strengthen that, if we can get to that. Stop the sprawl, and we have a lot of land in that urban service boundary still. I mean, there's lots galore that I think if we had sewer service to them, would be more attractive than starting from scratch or going through the septic scenario, which is gonna get more expensive as business goes on, as far as that's concerned in the state of Florida. They're really frowning on septic tanks in the future, and our close proximity to the St. John's River, it behooves us to do so.
Can I give you a little history of it? I guess I've been sitting in one of these chairs long enough. I just wanna give you, I'm the historian of the bunch. The reason a lot of our folks don't have sewer is that they came with a water crisis, that the water was so bad that they asked the city to please give them water. We told them if they got water and sewer, they'd have to annex in, but they were still able to use those septic tanks, so most of them opted out not to do it. If it comes a point where they have to get on that sewer line, then they find, they automatically have to, with agreement with the city, have to come in and become, when they get integrous to the city. So, it started with Roland Hills, Matt Gilbert.
Yep, Max Gilbert.
Max Gilbert promised that he was gonna bring that whole section in once he got the things built, and in good faith, it happened before I got on, they said okay. And then, once he got on, he thumbed his nose up, and we lost getting them annexed in. We'll have to probably come down and do a team effort. We only can do it if we work together, and if we do that, we'll be able to get more people on those lines, because we can leverage off of every place we could get money to do it with. And we gonna have to look for some creative ways to, to get that pipe and get it run.
I think one of the questions that was brought up, though, is trying not to annex other neighborhoods and basically providing them your services.
Well, we, we turned, we said, if you, if you wanted to come in to the city, I mean, if you wanted sewer, you'd have to annex. And we serving a bunch of folks anyway, they getting water lines and run right by them. They got our police department, our fire department, goes whenever they get a call. They using our services, they using our streets, and it's just as fair for the people who use our streets and our water and our sewer to pay for it as the ones that are already there. Some of us been paying for years, and we taking care of a large bunch of other folks. So, you know, being fair, it'd probably be more reasonable the more people you had and the more lines you had. You could do better work with doing it. It's just that they don't wanna pay the additional city tax.
Well, I can understand, but what we were trying to do is because it is so confusing, I mean, other than, we know where the riverfront is, we know where that line is, but we don't really know where the city lines are.
Well, because we never had to worry about it. Everybody talking about annexation, they been talking about annexation for 30 years, I know. And, and every time you bring it up, somebody comes with the excuse, we don't wanna, we don't wanna pay the taxes, we'll stay out. So, if everybody had a little skin in that game, we could do more for more people at a better cost, a better price, if we work together.
But I think the, but I think the other part of it is, is also setting rate structure up in such a way that there's a higher rate if you're not in the city. And so, at the end game is you end up in the same place, based on how you set your rate. So, while we may not necessarily create this 6.4 mill addition in taxes, by having the additional rate for the services, they're gonna still be paying more than what the average citizen is paying, who's already inside the city. And ultimately, by squaring those service boundaries off, you create a certain level of clarity overall. And we get to a point where you don't have two different governmental entities wasting res, wasting resources by trying to provide the same services. And also, it allows the city to be a benefit to the county at no detriment by providing, by providing those additional services in those areas, which leads to more services in other areas. Because if you, for example, we use police or fire as, as the example, based on looking at square mileage or square footage, we're providing a greater service, which will allow us the ability to expand into areas that we're passing anyway, to provide that additional protection. And it comes with, it comes with a cost, but that cost is by way of what's provided in that, in that interlocal agreement. And that's the part that I think now we look at it, and we figure out that we can either get it, you can get it through taxation, which is unpopular, or you get it by having a different rate structure. And we make sure that the rates are set up in such a way that it doesn't create a deficit within the city for providing that service, and it provides a mutual benefit to both parties. And so, we just gotta get accustomed to looking at things from a different set of lenses to come up with the same results. And that's where we are. But I wanna let Mr. Crowe talk a little bit before we continue on, if that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners Thad Crowe, Palaca Planning Director, wanted to just emphasize what the mayor had said, he is correct. You really have two options in the long run. One is an annexation strategy, and the other is an urban services delivery strategy. Both, I think, at least from a planning perspective, should be pursued kind of on a blueprint, a long-term blueprint. Identify your build-out, your service area, which, you know, logically goes up to Rice Creek and out to Francis, and possibly to East Palaca, there's, there's nothing prohibiting that. But by and large, it's expensive for counties to provide urban services. You all are not really in that mode of urban service provision. The city is. There's some efficiencies to be gained. I mean, a good example of when cities are not allowed to really grow as cities, you have kind of a bigger lots, more septic tanks, inefficiency of development, and it makes it more expensive for a city to provide those kind of services in the long run. So, there is a surcharge, and I believe the state allows you to charge 25% above the prevailing rate, Mr. Reynolds, 50%. So, there is the ability for some play to recover your costs from county customers. We've always used the carrot instead of the stick, we've tried to convince people to annex. When we've had people, a good example is Tommy Avenue off Edgemore, we had several septic tanks fail, which is usually how we get new annexations occurring. We sent letters out to the neighborhood, and that was just one of our success stories. We were able, we were able to annex several properties in there and kind of square out some of that enclave there, but it's been super difficult for us to otherwise approach it, because it's just piecemeal. It's very difficult. You get individuals coming into the city for reasons of septic failure, having been forced by the health department to get onto city water, and we can't really plan that way. And I think that what you're doing is great. I think that if we sit down and come up with some long-term strategies, and then year by year, start to implement those strategies, that's a sensible path. And I think it'll save the taxpayers money in the end, it'll save you a lot of headaches in the end as well. So, we're happy to help however we can.
Can I tell you one more thing? You know, right now, we talking about infrastructure getting from federal government, it's talking about infrastructure. We talking about infrastructure from the federal government, and they tell us when we talk about getting monies, it's gotta be shovel-ready. If we work together and did what we need to do with annexing, we could get water lines and sewer lines probably done, and we could have stuff shovel-ready to entice somebody to come in here. We have an advantage, because our fire department has SO rating that's so low that people get a chance to get a break on their insurance. And it's several things that they can gather and get if they were in the city and had that advantage that we have. The other thing is, this year, I've been very proud of our, the last couple of years of our city commission. They've thought out of the box, we've taken our TIF money and started to run water, is it water and sewer lines, man?
Yes, sir.
Water and sewer lines in the north side historical district, we looping around in the south side historical district, we're going to.
Black Heights.
For Black Heights. By the time we run that around, we'll be able to run some laterals off of it to give people better water and sewer lines in their area. And if we sat down and really worked together, I think that the area that we have that's contiguous, we should bring in, and I know people will be upset for a while, but when services get better, people don't mind.
Mr. Reynolds?
Where did Thad go? Thad, did that, that plan that we had done, did it kind of outline what the, I don't know, ideal municipal boundaries would be, or did it give us an idea of where the boundaries should roughly be?
Yes, Urbanomics, which is a company out of Jacksonville Beach, did a study for us two, three years ago, that identified, I wanna say, six or eight specific areas, and it looked at criteria, kind of gauged toward, does it make sense to annex? It looked at revenue generation, it looked at the ability to provide urban services, water and sewer. It looked at a whole host of factors, so you've got a document that can guide you, I think, in the future in terms of annexation.
I, I made a couple of quick notes, and that's kind of my thoughts on, you know, what we could begin doing, and, and my thought was, the city commission could take a look at that plan and basically pass a resolution stating that the, the ideal municipal boundaries would be based upon that plan, look at the areas that are not annexed yet, and set up urban services boundary based upon those ideal municipal boundaries, and then going forward, look at incentives and other ways as to try to start annexing just those areas. Meanwhile, also looking at service boundaries of water and sewer, and doing expansion of water and sewer, because in the past, the, the reason that we've had homeowners sign the pre-annexation agreements for the sewer, when they became contiguous, is that the city really had no other incentive to get somebody to annex. Once they had water and sewer, they don't wanna annex, they have no reason to annex. So, but if we determine in advance where our boundaries should be, we could extend water and sewer outside of those boundaries with no pre-annexation agreement, because we've already determined where we think the municipal boundaries should be. So, that was just kind of my thoughts on, on how we could approach it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, whichever one of you is in charge at the moment.
For visitors.
I noticed that, I noticed that it was mentioned that the East Palaca area was possible, was part of the possible service area. I think that before we go to that area, we need to understand that Putnam County is in the midst of trying to set up water and sewer in the area. We have a sewer plant and a water plant in the area. So, you know, before we overlap our service areas in East Palaca, I think some more discussion needs to be on that area.
Well, the, the, actually, the Urbanomics Plan really only touched on six enclaves, most of which were within the city limits on this, on the.
West side.
West of the river, prior to Rice Creek, and really before Crystal Cove. So, it didn't, it didn't expand us into areas where the county is there. We just wanna make sure that we increase capacity in the areas that aren't being served. When you look at the barge port, for example, those are areas that create jobs. You know, when we got into the conversation with PDM Bridge, and really what Veritas Steel, what they were doing, and the opportunity they had to put in additional bay and create 30 additional jobs and bring in additional $110 million of revenue into the city, just by bringing 400 feet of sewer line in, those are things that we consciously should've already done years ago. We missed the boat on it, but there's an opportunity to do it with one cycle of CDBG, if we choose not to do it just from better place or budgeting. And those are the low-hanging fruit that we hit, where we hit home runs. You know, and the other areas, you know, when you look at going down St. John's Avenue, and you got, and you go from city to county, city to county, and every street, or on Hudson Avenue at the end, and it's the same thing on the right and left side of the street, because in that community of Roland Hills, the backside has city water and sewer, and the front side is in the county. Those are easy fixes, and we can do that just by having an interlocal agreement. And those are the places where we can now test it and see, because it doesn't create any great loss or gain for anybody.
Mr. Holmes?
Just a clarification, Matt, and I believe Mary also mentioned pre-annexation agreement. Just a clarification, Matt, and I believe, uh, Mary also mentioned, um, pre-annexation agreement. As you know, you can't annex a property into the city unless it's contiguous to property that's already in the city. So, from time to time, we've had, uh, property owners whose wells or septic have failed, and they weren't contiguous. The pre-annexation agreement is an agreement we've had with them, saying that if and when they become contiguous, so that they are eligible for annexation, they will annex. Of course, that requires the property between them and us to annex in. And oftentimes, unless those property owners have failed wells or failed, uh, septics, they don't have an incentive to annex in. So, we have an agreement, but we never end up with an annexation, but we end up furnishing the sewer. Sewer has been, um, our prime incentive for having people annex. Water, we furnish more readily, but the sewer has been our prime incentive, sewer line.
But, uh, as I understand it, you can actually charge up to fifty percent more if you're not part of the city.
And, and we do not a, not a full fifty percent, but we do charge a surcharge. Yes.
That's excellent. Any other comments on the subject?
We don't wanna make it better. I mean, just charging them fifty percent more when they could become and we could be ready to do more things and entice people. We've got to have, we can't sit here and wait for somebody to come to us. We've got to have the stuff that they need when they wanna come and bring a, a business here. We've sat too long and waited for somebody to find poor little old Placca. And we've had a few things happen. We, as elected officials, have, to me, more, I have more responsibility than just to sit here. We need to be working with the chamber and stuff. We need to be looking. I went to a meeting in, uh, in Bentonville, Arkansas, and they had a little town called Rogers that doubled in size in ten years, because they actively went out and got dillards. Not the store, but their whole business, all administration stuff, to take a look at them. And we've got to, to let people know that we're the kind of place, we got people who need jobs that we can create. And if you look at it, the, the jail out there, the county jail, it never would've been out there if they hadn't used some innovation in looking to help get it done. I think Taylor Douglas in the county went in and did a thing to, to put in to get a grant to come in and lay the pipe. And as people along that corridor went in, then they got some of their money paid back. We've got to look at different ways of doing stuff, 'cause everybody else is. And we just, it bothers me for ten, for thirty years, more than thirty years, I've been sitting here and hearing the same song. It's time for us to, to get, play the real music and, and get this stuff moving.
That sounds like it is moving.
Mr. Bur- Mr. Bergen, last comment?
Well, actually, I think, you know, this year, we had a, you know, a pretty good year in economic development for, um, a town our size. And, you know, I think some of the conversations that we've had, you know, about attracting new businesses and stuff, you know, we've had, which revolve around the, the business park and infrastructure and those kind of things. And I think that if we can keep those discussions and actually move some of those things forward and actually having some shovel-ready sites, and I just got a good article on that today about a case study in Alabama, who actually got a Toyota plant. It took them ten years to get ready and get their site ready and, uh, but they actually, you know, won a big thing. Not that I expect a Toyota plant to drop into the United States anytime soon again, but those are the things that we have to do for economic development. We actually have to have those things in place, um, so that we're not passed by.
Mr. Chairman? What can we, as the county commission, do, Ms. Brown? You said that for over thirty years, talked about it and talked about it, ain't nothing got done, but that's not the county. That's the city. So how can we help you? How can we, like Commissioner Labo says, do we need a small committee to go forward? How, you tell us how we can help you move this ball forward, so in eight months, or six months, or three months, we're not talking the same thing we talked last April.
Well, I think Ms. Jones has the, is probably one of the better, um, thoughts. Creating a master plan as it relates to, um, infrastructure, particularly a sewer plan. And I think that's something that we can put together, so that we actually identify key areas that we wanna expand into and, um, do cost analysis on how we get there, where we receive the greatest benefit, from a commercial standpoint, job creation, um, as well as where we have the greatest residential impacts immediately. And, um, I think that's, um, the ways that we're able to do it. And I, and I think the chamber has to be at the table, uh, because the chamber has a, has its hand on the pulse of, um, where we're gonna receive the greatest economic benefit. And so, when we look at that, I think that's really the key. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My voice is a little off. Several years ago, we started a water wastewater master plan document, if you will, with a lot of volunteers from around the county. So we kinda have a skeleton to start from, but a master plan would help so much if we could come together, both y'all and the other municipalities and some of the business leaders, and identify all of that at one time. Because what happens is, in economic development, if you don't have that pipe already out to Veritas, if it's in that plan, at least you know how to get there and what it's gonna cost to answer your clients. So I would really encourage, and certainly the chamber would participate in any effort to do a water wastewater master plan.
And Terry, we should be able to do that with USDA and with getting, um, Senator Congressman Yoho's office involved. We've already kinda had some preliminary conversations on that.
Mr. Griffith and I have already started working on, um, kinda what the Gas Authority does with looking at ROI on expanding into different areas. And, uh, you know, we're, we're exploring different options and ways to try to, um, you know, get that ROI down as, as low as possible. The, the first one we looked at didn't, didn't seem very promising, but that was just one area that we looked at. But we can do that for these other areas, uh, that I mentioned earlier, you know, when we look at, um, uh, that plan that was done and, uh, see what places don't have water and sewer already, and then look at, uh, the cost to, to get it in there.
Mr. Mayor, um, seeing the thing we can do as it relates to moving this thing a little bit faster, putting dates around things. We know some of the partis that need to be, uh, the stakeholders that need to be part of this whole thing. We got the city commission, we got the, the county, uh, we got the chamber. I propose that we put a date of March one, that we can move forward with some initiative. I mean, we got a water plant that's not even fifty percent capacity. I mean, so we, in this age, and, I mean, as we sit here and we continue to talk, we're not moving. We need to move forward. We need to move forward with aggression. And, um, so we need to put some dates around these, so we can move forward.
Yeah, I agree. A date is a, an excellent thing. And you just need us to meet with you, Dana? Is that, uh?
I think it's more than, I think it's getting public works from both entities together, along with the chamber. And I would also say, get the finance folks involved, uh, along with the managers. And then, um, we can put a model together and bring it forward, because both entities have, both entities have already been working on this, uh, from different sides. It's just a matter of having some uniform purpose. Terry, you about to say something?
No, sir. I, I, I agree. I, I was gonna say the same thing. We definitely need to, uh, there's folks on both sides of this that we need to go ahead and, uh, maybe put some type of subcommittee together if we need to, to start talking about it and, uh, start putting, uh, putting some action with it, and put a plan together and come back to the, uh, to the group as a whole.
And so we can, I, I think we can, we can put legs to this pretty fast. Combine these two groups together, and by the next meeting, have some report as, as to progress. Um, I, I think we're all diligently working on having certain things in place as it relates to Fort Putnam, during the first quarter anyway. So, that shouldn't be, uh, the Putnam Project. That shouldn't be, that should be fine for us to kinda move forward with that. We agree that we can get that done in the first quarter. So we're gonna move the agenda. Uh, we've, we've actually talked about everything on the agenda by, by talking about this with my particular partner. We're gonna move and go on to St. John's Avenue and just get an update on the St. John's Avenue paving project. So, I guess, Press, you wanna come up and give us a update on St. John's Avenue?
Good evening. Um, we received the necessary funds for it. We're kinda holding it at bay right now. Waiting on y'all. Jonathan, I know, is working on getting the water lines redone in that area. So we, we got a grant to do the trail sidewalk on St. John's, and then we morphed that into the resurfacing project. So, we're, we're designing those right now. So, hopefully, when we get our design done, you'll have your water line worked out, and we can make this mesh all together and do it all at one time.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Sorry if my eye starts getting red. It's 'cause I just realized I just touched it with jalapeno on my fingers. Apologize for my tardiness, too. I let this slip by me. As an update, uh, in regards to the water line, we have submitted the plans, uh, to the DEP State Revolving Loan Fund. It will be heard, I believe, February fourteenth. And as soon as we hear that we're listed, and me and Mr. Reynolds can confirm that we do have the money within the utility fund for the down, or the debt service payment, we'll be in front of the commission, uh, moving forward probably to award a contract and to authorize the execution of the loan documents.
Mr. Chairman? Press, what's our timeframe? You said we're ready to pave at any moment, as we're just waiting on those water lines. Is that correct?
In a sense, we're doing our design right now, but we have enough time in it, and, uh, we've already talked to, uh, the, the funding source, that if we have to extend it, it would not be a problem to extend it, because they understand the situation about the water main.
Yeah, but our citizens don't understand. They're wanting this road done. I get beat up every week about this road. And the question, while I still have the floor, if you don't mind, is back when we first had this discussion, the discussion was, if the city of Placca didn't have the money, could Putnam County go ahead and do the water lines and have the city pay us back? And that was a, a possibility there. So, Mr. Griffith, I got a question for you. How much time are you looking at before this revolving, this, this loan or whatever is gonna come through for these water lines? And what can Putnam County do to help you? Or maybe we just go ahead and put a pipe in across, under the road and do some drainage work and move forward on our side? So if you'll help me with that.
Yeah, that's a very good question. Uh, the only hindrance from a, a timing perspective is waiting for that February, February fourteenth deadline to pass. DEP reimburses on a basically, um, completed-in-the-field schedule. So we would submit invoices and get reimbursement. So the county was to front the funds. It would not matter, so long as the city had the documentation, and we could submit the invoices to DEP, then to reimburse the county. Uh, the other hindrance would be the procurement, uh, process. From my experience, it would take us probably two to three months to get through the advertisement and the award and to get a contractor to mobilize. Uh, that is, you know, assuming we can advertise now. The city does not have to award, um, just by doing an invitation to bid. We do have package plans and specifications, and we have a permit in place. So that is an option that is on the table. We just have to wait for that February fourteenth day to pass.
So, February fourteenth, after that date, the city of Placca could move ahead. We could probably move ahead with some sort of bid, the county could. And we could see St. John's Avenue starting maybe in the summer? Is that what we would look at?
I doubt seriously if it could happen that fast. I mean, even if Jonathan get the contract out in the next two to three months, you're talking about a good nine-month construction process. I mean, so, you know, that would have to be done before we'd ac- actually start any construction of our own.
And what kind of drainage are we looking at? Because we, we know Placca Healthcare has drainage issues down there.
We are, and we've also submitted for a grant to look at the whole drainage of that area. We hopefully hear from that very shortly. But we are still gonna look at drainage. Other than that, to try to help the healthcare center and also the drainage all along St. John's.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor.
Sir, does this, does this project, um, can we use Better Place for this project? Can we use the Better Place fund for this project?
That's up to Ms. Papel or Mr. Suggs. I can't answer that question.
If, if, if you didn't have any, uh, projects to, uh, the funding that's in that, budget or that balance, then could it not be used for something that's already in place? If it's not committed funds?
Yeah, Stacy, I think all our Better Place funds are committed, aren't they?
All of our Better Place funds are, are currently committed, and this is us spending money for relocation of water lines?
Could some of those be relocated on to St. John's?
I would have to go to a higher authority than myself to make sure that was a legitimate use of our Better Place money.
Commissioner?
Uh, yes, um, evidently, from what I'm hearing, the press and Jonathan, we're talking about at least a year to fix St. John's Avenue. Said I'm understanding, if the two of you correct, then it's gonna be a year or more before St. John's Avenue's paved. Who is responsible for the current maintenance of St. John's Avenue?
We are, both of us are.
Reckon we could stick a little bit of asphalt in some of them holes that makes you hit your head on the top of your car when you drive down the street?
Or drop your trailer in the middle of the road. Well, we could, you know, we could lower the speed limit. That would help, but that ain't gonna do any good. No, I'm, I'm, didn't mean, uh, we certainly could.
I know you was trying to get a rise out of me. I saw, I saw it in your eyes.
Let's don't do that no more, please.
No, we, we can certainly look at that. I'm, I understand. I drive it, too. It's in bad shape. But, you know, we were trying not to spend any maintenance money on it with the, you know, we gonna be essentially rebuilding that road in its entirety.
I understood, but I kinda thought it was gonna be within a few months. I didn't realize we were talking a year out, or possibly even longer. I think if it's gonna be like that for a year, we need to try to find the money to go patch on it some, stick a little asphalt in them holes or something.
See if we can at least try to fix some of the worst spots in it.
So, and just, and just to answer your question, under the interlocal, uh, the county maintains St. John's Avenue from William Street West. From William Street?
Actually, uh, believe it's been updated to Mosley Avenue, sir. Uh, I think we have some funds within our millinery surface line, and it might be a good joint city-county partnership just to, uh, put a Band-Aid on it for the next year. The city could move forward with advertising now. Is that correct, Mr. Reynolds, without any commitment of funds to speed things up as far as the, um, potable lines go? And we already have an advertisement out, uh, which I believe has been awarded for asphalt millinery surface throughout the city, uh, by unit quantity. So, it's something we could do.
Yeah, it would be really great, in my opinion, if we could do some kind of a joint venture between city and the county and maybe at least get it to where it's not as bad as it is right now, while we're waiting on these items that need to be taken care of before we can proceed.
And to follow with Jonathan, the county just bid our asphalt, our, our continuing asphalt contract. We got some excellent prices on that, that, you know, between the joint ventures, two of us could go, we could take advantage of that. I mean, we got asphalt in place for eighty-two dollars a ton.
And I think we piggybacked as well, so.
That means somebody will be doing an assessment for those areas that need to be, uh, attended to like, like yesterday?
It's already done.
We'll take a look at those, and if I need to, I'll coordinate with Jonathan, and we'll, we'll see if we can get it done here in the next few months on it.
Okay. And so also, while, while we're on St. John's Avenue, um, a hot topic for us recently has been the four-way stop. And so Jonathan, if you wanna kinda, maybe one of you guys kinda take that quickly. You, you're there, Press, that's fine. And, uh, you guys approach it. It's, it's, it's a fifty-fifty split on who likes it and who hates it, so.
Um, waiting on my commission to give us some direction on how you would like us to proceed with that, sir.
Classic game of hot potato, right?
Now, I'll be honest with you. From, from the county public works, we have not received any complaints on it. I've seen, uh, the only reaction that we have is that it's been positive, and I've driven through it. It works good. Uh, you know, we're looking at a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to put a signal back up.
Right. And so, so we had, just so that, you know, we, we had a couple residents, uh, some residents that actually live on the street, coming to, uh, city commission meetings, uh, complaining about safety issues that relate to them trying to get out of their properties, particularly during, uh, I guess, well, for lack of any other term, rush hour, or morning traffic, and also going home in the evenings. Um, I, I think from a personal perspective, some of us actually like the four-way stop better. It's just a matter of having some folks who haven't looked at the driver's test in a long time to let them know that the person to the right has the right of way. But, other than that, that's kinda where we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Is it not, I mean, feasible for us to at least, um, I know, two hundred thousand?
Is it not, I mean, feasible for us to at least, I know two-hundred thousand dollars, we talked about this in our previous commission, that at least we look into putting some kind of flashing light there to bring a little bit of more caution? Because I personally have been hit, almost hit, several times when going through that stop sign and it's a matter of people just, it's not paying attention, um, so I don't know what we can do to alleviate that. And like I said, this has happened on more than one occasion at various times of the day, um, and I've gotten inboxes on Facebook, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten people walking up to me in stores. We have to do something to at least increase the visibility that it is a four-way stop sign, because you do have those individuals that have been there for a while and they just think that it's no light that they can keep going through. But we need to bring some kind of caution that it is a four-way stop sign in the matter of lights, I don't even know if that's something that we can look into.
We'll, we'll look into all those aspects of it, there are certain regulations and statutes we have to follow for four-way stops and the warnings and all, but we were certainly looking at, see what we can do.
Thank you.
Um, one other question on the four-way stop, um, excuse me, why, why we're looking at it and thinking it might be permanent, I mean, I, I think our job is mainly public health and safety and that safety aspect would be, again, like Commissioner Campbell was saying, as you're approaching that stop sign, there's no warning, whether it's flashing light or the little bumps in the, uh, the little, I guess, bumps in the road that kind of tells you that, um, you're approaching a, a stop. But I, I think we need to do some level of study as to the traffic that, you know, are passing through that area, if there's a way we can do that. I think that'll help determine what path we need to take. We don't really know how much traffic passed through that intersection.
We, we just let a contract out to do our annual traffic counts and that'll be part of, those roads will be counted, counted in that annual count. That was just approved by our commission at the last meeting, so, you know, that will be started here probably very shortly. And I could ask them to do those roads first and then we can get that data and see where we stand.
Yeah, my overall position is safety over cost.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones, last comment, we're going to move the agenda, we're going to try to get out here.
Wait a minute, I want to say this, Ms. Chairman.
We haven't yielded the floor to you.
I got hit from behind at that light, so I don't mind the four-way stop sign. And if they can't see four stop signs on each corner, they don't need to be behind that wheel.
Did you stop abruptly?
Don't ask me to explain why this is, but the general public calls the Chamber of Commerce when there's anything wrong with traffic, just like the traffic lights when they ride a sink on Reed Street. We have had many calls about the four-way stop and none of them wanted it to stay that way and keep asking, when will the light be fixed? When will the light be fixed? So, I didn't want it to go unsaid that people are calling and complaining, they just don't know where to do it, so they find and call us.
Y'all take complaints, because we got, we can.
Uh, I, I guess that's the nature of the business. I handed some of mine off to Jonathan on Reed Street when the lights went out of sync after the hurricane and so finally that was, thank you, that was resolved. But there are quite a few calls that have come in over that issue and still coming in.
Okay, so we're, okay, so we're on that and you got the traffic count coming and we're good, so that gives us a measurable for when we come back.
All right, let's move.
Roundabout, roundabout.
Yeah, roundabout. Let's move to the gas transmission lines. We covered some of that, that the gas lines are being extended. Do we have any comment on the gas lines? I think that we've already answered that question. Mr. Griffith can give us an update?
All I can tell you is what I've seen around the county, I know that they've gotten, is there one specific area you're talking about?
No, no, I've seen, I've seen them extending out different areas into the county.
Um, I know in regards to kind of the areas surrounding the city, recently they've gotten out past the Silver Lake area. They're much farther than our infrastructure. Our infrastructure extends to basically if you use the state roads, Walmart, the St. John's River Water Management District, the Business Park and the Barge Port. I know they've done a, a much better job at extending the utility and offering it to the residents of the county. They're, they're constantly doing two and, two-inch line and larger extensions, yes, sir.
Okay.
I attend the gas authority meetings, I represent the gas authority and I can tell you that at every month's meeting, on their agenda is potential expansion into a different area. Again, they, they have to base it on potential customers and return on the cost. And admittedly, their cost is not the same as for installing a sewer line. They're doing most of the installation themselves rather than contracting it out with their existing staff, which helps them in terms of, of their cost. They may kind of not have to contract boring under a.
Mr. Holmes, they need you to talk into the microphone, he can't hear you.
I'm not used to people not being able to hear me, but I do have a little bit of a, whatever, remnants of something going on my voice. I was saying that at almost every meeting of the gas authority, they have on their agenda a potential expansion. They, they base their decision on, on the cost feasibility. I indicated a minute ago, they have a kind of a guideline of a seven-year break even based upon potential or expected use each of the line. They do a little survey in the area to have an idea of who's willing to, interested in tapping into the line or having service run, and then they, they move forward on that basis. They do the, the installations for the most part in-house, they use their own staff to, to run the lines unless it involves technical boring under a road or highway or something like that. And, and they have just been generally and continuously expanding the amount of pipe in the ground over the last, well, year. So, um, they, um, if there's, if there are people who are interested in an area, if they have a, if there's an area that is, is looking to be serviced by gas and the hurricanes help that issue, because obviously generators operate on natural gas and, and there's a, it's more convenient to use the natural gas line than it is propane or other, other options. So, we have a flurry of calls when hurricanes come and people are looking to connect home generators. But in general, if there's, if there are people out there who have an area where they'd like to see their gas line expanded, they'll contact the gas authority, they'll be more than happy to take a look at that area, see where it fits with their, with their existing line, how, how much, you know, cost would be of running a line there and looping it to maintain pressure and if, if the numbers are there or even close or the potential is there, they'll, they'll move forward.
Yeah. Been seeing it a lot. All right, let's move on to the Business Park. Any questions on the Business Park?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
That's how I figured you would.
Thank you, thank you very much. Last year we talked about, in the minutes, Mr. Hammond and Mr. Crowe getting together. There seemed to be some problem with the development of the Business Park, the PUD, the SGP, all these acronyms that we float around throughout the commission and the council. But I'd like to get an update of where it's been since April. So, it's been almost ten months now. So, I'd like to know what, what we've accomplished in that period of time as far as you and Mr. Crowe, you're the only one here, Mr. Hammond is not here, but Mr. Powell is up to date and I think he's in the room also.
Uh, yes, sir. We have been working on it when we can essentially as resources allow. Uh, and just a little bit of background, that is a planned development, it's what we call a planned industrial development. It's also not platted, so there's really two things that have to be done. Really the most important thing to be done is the plating of the property, because shovel-ready, one of the more, most important things about shovel-ready is a, industry needs to come in and be able to essentially buy a property and not have to go through a two or three month process of planning or re, plating or rezoning. So, the idea that we had was to try to get the Business Park platted without being, and the challenge is plating it without being too specific, because as the chamber well knows, I mean, people want different properties, you want the ability to assemble parcels or split parcels. So, the idea that we had and that we were working on was the plat process for the city provides for variances. So, essentially identify the most important things like the, the future roads and then identify more flexible utility easements that can be shifted around by staff without having to go through the public hearing process. So, the idea is to get something set that's fairly straightforward where people know what the future is going to be for the development of the Business Park in terms of infrastructure, but at the same time allow staff to basically have some wiggle room as people come in on an individual basis. Jonathan Griffith and his staff have taken, I think in the last few months, we were able to get, he sat down with his people and basically charted out what they thought would be the best future direction of utility easements, drainage easements, water sewer. So, I think that we're at a point where we can sit down with the county and basically try to update that, the survey essentially, which will turn into a plat. Now, if you want an interlocal agreement, that can either be through the plat or it can be through the planned development or it can be a separate freestanding interlocal agreement, so it's really, the preference is yours.
Mr. Crowe, as you knew from last year, I'm not in favor of plating something and the only reason is I don't think we should be telling businesses that we have two acres here, three acres there. If I come in and I need eight-point-five acres or I need three-point-nine, I can't imagine, we can't cut that out and have a strike force fund, if you will, ready to bring sewer and stuff. You know, you talk about being shovel-ready, but that means money in the ground, waiting on somebody to come. If we had money above the ground, ready when that person walks in and says, we can do this in three months and have it ready, I don't see the problem there. Now, didn't we have a grant, the county got a grant to plat that and we did not do that? Or did we not, did we do that?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Mr. Hammond, but my understanding from talking to him was that the grant was expended and it allowed them to essentially get a stormwater permit from the Water Management District, which was a huge step. So, that essentially the stormwater's taken care of, but what's not taken care of is all the other infrastructure, future infrastructure out there.
So, what I'm hearing you say today, basically is you're not, you don't really care too much about the plat, you can adapt to that as we go too. So, am I hearing that correct?
I think so, we can get a flexible plat, we certainly can do that.
Okay, good, all right. Mr. Chairman, thank you, I yield the floor.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be possible to let Brian speak to this, seeing how they're the marketer of the park.
Actually, I can't market any of the land as it stands right now. We can't, couldn't sell an inch of it if we chose to, because there's, you know, the way that the city's ordinance is set up for plating forbids that basically. You know, if you look across from the spec building, that's a fifty-three acre site. We can't sell any of it, I can't divide it up or offer it to anybody that wants ten acres, five acres or fifty-three acres. Until we get some kind of agreement or annulment of, of the plating system and how that's done, we're sitting here unable to do anything with that property.
Brian, could you be a little more specific about exactly what you need to get this project moving? Do you need an interlocal agreement that states what?
Um, I, you know, I really don't care how you work it out, I just need the plating the way that the city's ordinance is written nullified for that piece of property. Whether that is an interlocal agreement, whether the city council abates it for that particular piece of property, it, it doesn't matter to me which way you want to go, it just needs to be done.
Is there a way that we can direct staff to look into that and bring it to the commission?
We've done that for two years.
I think that's why we were expecting an interlocal agreement, was because I thought the two parties had made that determination that was needed to move forward within the compliance of the ordinance was the interlocal agreement. So, it's that document I think we're waiting on, I, it's not my pay grade either.
Put that on hold just for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, we have gone over this before and you're absolutely right, it's been a delay in getting it back to where it needs to be, so if it's, if it's okay with the chair and with the mayor and for the, and both commissions, I'd like to have the opportunity to get with staff at our earliest convenience, get with our both learned attorneys from both sides, one from the city, one from the county, of course, and then those folks in, in planning and development and zoning, let's get this thing moving forward. I think there's, we're at a point now in the discussion where I think we understand what needs to be done and I think it's just a matter of trying to get the parties in the, in the same room and let's work out this, this agreement. I know Mr. Tom, Mr. Holmes as well as Mr. Manning, both have had conversations and, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe briefly about this, I think we're all on the same page, we just need to go ahead and get it moving forward and I'll take the, I'll take the lead on that and work with the new city manager, Mr. Follston, and, and see if we can get that thing moving forward and get it back here as soon as we can.
That sounds good. Kevin, did you have something to add to this?
Real quick, I, I agree with making it flexible. I was just talking with that and I guess Brian before wasn't that flexible on it, but I agree with being flexible to, to try to get, attract business to come in here. So, I definitely will research this some more on my end of it and I'm, I, I do agree with that.
Okay, great. Is there any other comment on this?
No, I, I mean, I, just a point of clarity, I mean, it hasn't been the city that's been delayed on this, I think we've worked diligently, it's just been a matter of, really, Mr. Crowe's inability to convince his counterpart to kind of see, to kind of move in that direction and so I think we finally got that in place, but I don't want us to put it on the shoulder of the city and say we've been a two-year delay.
That was not my intention, Mr. Mayor, but I do believe that, that we got, we've got enough people in place now to make this thing move forward.
If it makes you feel any better, we'll take the blame, Mr. Mayor, we just want it to move forward from here. I don't really, I don't really care.
We'll take it.
I mean, we'll weather that storm, but not that one.
We'll, we'll take that one and then we'll move on to the leachate.
This is a fun conversation.
Yes, it is, leachate.
So, Mr. Gas, I saw you.
That's one of his favorite subjects.
I saw you jumping up, ready to come in here and talk to us.
Well, the interlocal agreement for leachate disposal and for biosolids disposal has been working well from our end. I wanted to just give a little update on what happened over this last year. Basically, for four months of the year, we did not send any leachate to the city of Palatka. That was due to either weather conditions, like when it gets cold, we try not to send it because the bugs at the plant get very weak when it gets cold and then you starve them with no nutrients from the leachate and it's not good for the plant. So, when we have extreme cold weather, we try not to send any leachate to the city of Palatka, but we also did have some mechanical issues with our tanker truck. So, basically, one-third of the year, we did not haul leachate to the city. We did, however, send one-point-four million gallons in that eight-month period that we were operating. But as I said, this is a interlocal agreement that I'm happy with and I hope that the city is happy with.
Happy is a relative term, probably.
We do try to work together. If, if there's any issues at the plant, we instantly shut down, we, you know, we try to be good team players in this operation, because it's, it's a mutual benefit for both organizations.
Leachate's always a catch-22, but I think you guys, I think we've been doing a great job together as, as it relates to what we're dealing with at this point. Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, I just want to speak to that mutual cooperation. Mr. Gas and his staff work very well with Brian McCain and his staff. And just to put it kind of, to give you context, one-point-four million gallons?
Yes.
That's equal to the city's daily peak flow average at the plant. So, if you, if you can imagine during, you know, a storm event, when we bring in an excess of one-point-three million, you know, over eight months, it's not that much, but it does have an adverse effect on the biology of the plant. But again, Mr. Gas and his staff work very well with Mr. McCain and there's a lot of dialogue back and forth so that, you know, you guys have the advantage of having the disposal here within the county and we also have the advantage of telling them when we can't take it.
We are lucky in the fact that unlike somebody who's connected directly to the sewer system, you can't not flush your toilet. If there is an issue, we can find alternative methods to take care of our leachate until we get things back to a normal operating procedure. So, that is the one thing that we are able to do is turn off and turn on what does go to the city.
Yeah, thanks. Any other comments? Okay, let's close the leachate, let's move to other interlocal agreements.
I think the newest other interlocal agreement that we have deals with our, with our building permit and, and inspections as well, and maybe we can get an update as to how that's going at this point. Both, Mr. Crowe, if you want to join him as well. Both, Mr. Crowe, if you want to join him as well.
So far, since we've taken over, things have been, seem to be running smooth. It was a little backed up in the beginning. I guess they were backlogging plans, so they didn't get into them, that we were going to be able to do a review on them. Things have eased up a little bit, but I think it's working really well. The ladies in the office over there are fantastic. They notify us of what's going on, and I think things are really going well.
Any suggestions on how to tweak the process?
No, we, we've sit there and we've set up a file cabinet for plan review as when they come in. So we're implementing a few things over there for them to get plans to us, and, you know, we're running back and forth between the two offices, maybe a little bit more scanning, electronic signatures, and back off on a lot of the paper for the office.
Okay. Bad Pro Plan Director, City Plac, I just wanted to add that it's been a positive experience. Kevin and Leo have been terrific. They've worked very hard to help us go through this transition. Our staff, I think, has worked very well with them, so we appreciate what the county has done. Thank you.
One of the things that, one of the things I think is most important about this, we'll call it a pilot study, for lack of any other term at this point, it creates an opportunity for us to be able to have one-stop shopping for people who want to come into Palatka in so many ways, and from the development standpoint, so that there's some uniformity, really, in the way certain interpretations are in place. And I think it also allows us to be able to, to really look at the inner workings of both the city and the county together, and so it cultivates that relationship.
Yes, Mr. Powell, do you have any idea how long do you think, or would it be practical for the offices to have the ability to be able to turn in a complete electronic permit package?
For the county or for the city?
Either or.
Right now, IT has been working on our electronic transmittal. I know Mr. Reynolds has worked on the, or had started working on the permit application for the city being available online and submitted as per state requirements. I don't know where we are fully on that yet, but I believe they're pretty close on that. But for us, it's, it's just, we are able to accept plans electronically, but right now, you're still going to have to come into the office for some, some parts of it when it comes to the permit application.
You just thought it might make it easier going back and forth from the city to the county and what have, if you could just send them by email?
I would rather send things by email. I would rather sign all their documents electronically, and then just receive phone calls, you know, in our office. Most of the contractors know us anyway, so they're calling us already. But yeah, I think, I think getting things electronic between the city and the county would work a lot better.
Has the county implemented Office 365 yet? As we look for the IT director.
I have the book on my desk for Office 365.
That's a good start.
These computer guys.
All right. Bob Stunder, IT Director, Office 365, sounds good. I love the commercials, don't you? They're great.
Absolutely.
Inside the city, inside the county, we can talk to each other pretty well. It's Office 365 that lives in the cloud, and that's where we don't have a good, solid connection all the time, is our internet connection. If, we're always one backhoe away from not having Office 365, so we have not implemented Office 365. However, communicating back and forth between the county and the city, we don't need Office 365. We just need to work out some of the details of getting this to work for us, getting past the trial period. If we're past the trial period, yeah, we're going to take the step forward. We can talk and figure out how we want to get the, the data going back and forth is easy. That's not the hard, that's not the hard part. Sharing the documents, we can do all that, we just need the signal to go and, and make this happen, so.
And what about your workflow process?
We have an online presence for bringing in the permit. We have a process in place, like Kevin said, we're actually in development of redesigning the entire permit process. This kind of snuck up on us that we would be now taking in a separate entity. The only things I think of when I do this is, how do we handle the financials? You guys want your money, we want ours, we have different finance departments, we have to figure out how we split that up and get that to flow the right way as well. But it, like, it's all doable.
Okay, it's still an emphasis state, okay.
Yeah, baby steps.
Doing good. Mr. Sykes, did you have something to?
Just, just a follow-up with Mr. Powell, if I could. Kevin, can you, when we put the interlocal together, we put some parameters in there on time and things of that nature, have we found where we have an issue with the amount of time that we've allotted? I think it's like twenty hours or so a week, or something like that?
It's twenty-five hours a week. I, I don't see it in the beginning, we were worried about it, but as things have smoothed out, leveled off, I think, I think we're fine where we're at.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, great. Any other comments on the interlocal agreements? Okay, let's move to tourism. Who's going to head that one up?
What's up?
Yes.
Want me to, I'll tell them who the chairman is.
I just found out who the chairman is.
It would be you.
Yeah, I just found that out.
Ashley, good evening again. Tourism is doing, doing exceptionally well, as I'm sure most of y'all know. I was looking at the February schedule, and we have two pretty large high school bass tournaments, which means, of course, a lot of parents and their children coming into town and spending money, which we all like. We have two adult bass tournaments as well, that are rather large in February, and we've diversified our calendar so much. I mean, we have the Iron Horse Event, it's at Triath, Triath, I'm not even going to try. Yeah, that word, that's coming in February. We have two softball tournaments at St. John's River State College. Our hotels are really happy, they're staying full. We, of course, still have temporary employees from all the projects. I think Brian mentioned earlier, we have three or four economic development projects that have temporary people that are living in the hotels, which adds to the bed tax that's growing monthly. I don't know if y'all have any specific questions, I'm happy to, to answer anything and all, but basically, we're doing really, really well in tourism.
On that question, are there things that we need to work on here as a city and county?
Both doing a great job. I mean, obviously, the, the Palatka waterfront has been undergoing some construction, and it looks great. October, yeah, twenty eighteen, October, the FLW, which was a large bass tournament that was slated here, and we had to reschedule them into a new location. They had agreed to finally come back after four years of me torturing them, and they were really excited about using the new Palatka Riverfront, so they'll be just astounded because they haven't seen it, they're from Kentucky. So I'm real, real proud to show them that, but it's an awesome job, and safety's a major concern. The Sheriff's Department has always been a great partner with us. They go to all of our hotels, our boat ramps, and check on those periodically through all of our major events, so just keep doing what y'all are doing, and I think we'll keep doing what we've been doing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyman?
Mrs. Jones, Dana, there's pressure from our industrial hub on the horizon as far as hotel space in the urban service area, city and the urban service area. What does, could it impact tourism, say, in the next twenty-four to thirty-six months? Is there going to be competition to the point that one is going to suffer? I know that we have lots of construction workers, both at GP and Seminole, and they're competing for those rooms. I'd like to get an answer on that, what we should do, maybe, as a community. And the other thing is, we could get a year-by-year comparison to what the Tourism Development Fund has done, the heads and beds tax. I think there's a compelling story there that we should all know collectively, and what it, it does and could do for us.
Right. Okay, first, while I can remember it, the first question had to do with the competition between the temporary workers, if you will, and the events that we have. Most of the events are usually over the weekend, or Thursday through Sunday. Most of the temporary workers are closing down and out, so I have not seen a lot of competition so far. We're trying to manage and stay ahead of what we call peak construction times, like I'm constantly talking with Georgia Pacific. Not Seminole yet, because there's just going to be a smaller trickle in amount while they're going through the permitting for the next, I don't know, twelve or eighteen months, so, you know, I, I think we're okay there, until we hear different. We're also doing a large, kind of an inventory, if you will, of other types of rentals that people wouldn't necessarily know about, and giving that to some of the crew leaders on some of the teams that are coming in, the construction teams. They have private homes that people are willing to rent out, long-term, short-term. They have mobile homes, they have rooms. We've probably got another additional five to six hundred of those on that spreadsheet that are not our traditional hotels, bed and breakfast, and fish camps.
That's great.
So not yet. Good problem if we get to worry about it.
Yeah, those are good growing things.
I'll look forward to looking for that problem. The second question was?
The tourism, if you just give the evolution of where we were?
Wow.
We've raised the amount we collected, and, and what it's doing and how it's grown?
From memory, let's see. I know it started in the nineties.
General tournament.
I know in the last six years, it's actually grown like fifty-eight percent in revenues, which is just astounding, because it was just kind of slowly evolving from the ninety-six era into the two thousand, two thousand five, six, but in twenty thousand and ten and eleven, when we landed that first elite and kind of got on the national radar, and then some of the other groups, the Trails, CSO, and some of those groups were formed, you know, just a lot of great things started happening at one time, making that bed taxes grow and grow and grow. The things that the, that the revenues are used for to help support events, festivals, activities, and it's an application process, and February is our second of two grant cycles for this fiscal year. So people will actually apply for monies for, whether it's a tournament or a festival, maybe basketball, whatever, sporting event. And I can't even collectively in my head spout that number off, but it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we funded different organizations and groups. And then they also, of course, fund cultural arts in our county to a large degree as well. So basically, over the past fifteen, twenty years, however long that's been since it was enacted and by y'all in ninety-six, maybe, I think.
Oh, no, I'm stretching.
I'm going to date yourself if you say you're on the commission when that happened.
That's right. A lot of people don't know what we do with that money. And, you know, the, what I'd like to bring out, the quality of events that we're getting, you just said one with the Elite Series. We might not all be into bass fishing, but when you can qualify to get one of these events and you share your town to the world through ESPN, it's a big deal. And you notice our quality events are getting better and better because we're raising more money to get the better venues.
And everybody wants to go where FL, where the Bassmaster Elite Fish, whether it's a recreation fisherman-at-home, or the FLW, which is why they came in twenty fourteen. We're also, and probably most people don't know this, we're one of the few cities in the country that have hosted four Bassmaster Elite tournaments in six years. That's not something you will hear them say, because they will tell you Bassmaster that they don't go anywhere over, you know, a certain amount of years, because they want, you know, the fans to find new areas, but those guys love it here, and what we collectively do as both elected officials and business community and community leadership is, we make it easy for them and great for them. We do anything they need us to do, and the fish show up, and it's all like magic happening, but.
I bring, I bring it up primarily to say, this is an interlocal agreement, without being an interlocal agreement, really.
It is.
The city and the county is working well.
Yeah, and that actually started, Chip, in twenty-ten, when the first thing I found out to bid on an elite, you know, you just don't get a call and say, "Hey, we want to come to your town, there's a bid and a proposal process." And I had been hammering them about an opportunity, so they sent me the, the list of criteria, and the first thing I noticed is we didn't have the infrastructure. So I met with city and county officials, and that's when they came together and purchased the two floating docks to give us the dock footage required to host a bass elite. And, and you're right, that was the beginning of an interlocal agreement that has existed since then i- in the eyes of tourism.
I have one question before she finish up. There was one item on the docket from the last joint meeting about internally marketing to our people in town as it relates to all of the large events that we have, we have to the local community, the activities that we have, services and the goods that's, that's available as it relates to tourism. So have you done anything by way of?
Well, again, I cannot expend any resources on the internal market for the tourist development revenues. It's against statute and against ordinance, but the chamber has tried to put out more marketing materials in some maybe non-traditional, normal places, like instead of just being in the hotels and a restaurant or two, we've got it in the river center. We've tried to talk to a couple of groups about some kind of programs for children to have their own tourism day locally for field trips, so, you know, I've made little progress in that area, but maybe steps of, around what we can do with the resources we have.
Missing a big opportunity.
Oh, I agree. I, I told you this before, I, I believe you. I, I really think our residents need to understand what we have to offer as tourists, because they absolutely, for the most part, don't, don't know how beautiful it is here and how lucky they have it to live here. I'm, I'm with you on that.
Dana, can you tell them about the thing that's coming up the end of the month for us, our air show?
Oh, the, so see if I can get the name right, the Car and Air Show. We've renamed it, and I missed the last airport advisory meeting. The airport has an annual fly-in, and it's open to the public and residents. It's really cool, if you've never been, you ought to go. They work really hard on getting a lot of people to fly in from, from all over, I guess, the country, and they let the children go and sit in some of these planes, there's plane rides, and nice event.
And we got a helicopter, now you can go rent a helicopter ride, so we're looking at doing.
Yeah, he's, he's open now, it's a new business in our airport, he's leasing the old terminal building.
Mr. Sykes?
It's the last Saturday in January.
Twenty-seventh.
Please go.
It's an excellent event, absolutely. Been, been to the last couple, three of them, they're awesome events, but I just, this is going to, I looked in the audience first to make sure Mr. Crowe was not in the room before I said this. Mr. Mayor, this sounds like, this internal marketing sounds like a perfect opportunity for you to expound on your idea of a electronic sign somewhere down there near the, near the bridge.
You got to look at Matt Reynolds on the other side, he holds the money. So we've talked about it, I think we, I think we kind of left some contingency money out there to, to look at the idea, just because we, there has to be a better way of putting way finding out. I think Mr. Griffith has worked diligently on making sure that we kind of create new draws into our, our riverfront area, into our downtown, and, but I, I think signage in itself goes a long way with doing some of the things that the chamber's excluded from doing by way of, of creating promotions for events, and it may be another opportunity for the city and the county to partner.
Any other comments?
To partner on an electronic sign down on the river, is that what you were saying?
Well, we're looking at a construction company to donate the money as well.
Yeah, I bet you are. I bet you are.
Can't we pick one up down by the railroad tracks and move it down to the?
No, no. The tourist development council would have a lot to say about that.
Can I watch when you apply for the permit?
But I, I think, but, but I think we're going to move forward with, we're going to move forward with our position, depending on if we can meet our own, to make sure that we got the proper zoning in place to allow us to put the sign in first, and that's the housekeeping bit that we're working on now, so that we can actually get that in. And we talked about the riverfront, by the river centers being the, the proper area to put that in, so that we can catch people on both sides of the bridge as they're coming in and out of the community to provide some information on different events throughout the city. And I think we can also use that to promote the county as well, and to kind of hit the areas where you have deficits and you can't touch.
Right, even on our sign, it's limited to only those events that are Right, even on our sign, it's limited to only those events that are geared to external tourism. That's why you don't see the local Christmas parade on our sign. So it, it's very limiting in terms of what we can do for resident awareness.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Commissioner Harvey just reminded me, you know, on the, before I say this, I want to preference that it, it may sound kind of farfetched to begin with, but when we talk about marketing of the city of Placa and Putnam County for events, one of the things that I brought up recently with our public works director, Mr. Tompkins, is when we start getting into the point of where we're replacing our lights across our bridge, you know, it might be an opportunity out there for us to look and see if there is a mechanism that we can use that will actually change the color of the lights to actually meet the, the event that's happening, so to speak. When we do our, our Christmas parade at night, you know, if our lights across the bridge represented the event, you know, or, or Veterans Day, or, you know, when we have breast cancer awareness or Autism Month, those type of things, you know, that, that bridge back and forth across that river is, we get several thousand vehicles a day. And again, it might be an opportunity for us to, to explore the oppo, you know, if, if we can do something that would again, kind of tie the two together and, and market what it is we're trying to do here and, and show that we have our community at heart and we want to, you know, just kind of do those things. So again, it's just one of those pine sky things, but I do think it's something we can actually explore because when we start replacing our lights across that bridge, we might as well do something that can benefit us in the future.
Just get the okay from DOT?
Well, that's, exactly, but that's, that's the point. I mean, we got to start somewhere, you know, so, you know, we do maintain those lights. We have the, the agreement to maintain them, so I, I'm sure we can have some conversations. Again, it sounds, uh, sounds kind of a pine sky and a little farfetched, but again, I, I want to go back to marketing our community.
I make a motion that the county fund that project.
I think it failed for lack of second.
So guys, we've had, uh, we've had a, a pretty good discussion here. I think it's been a, a good follow-up meeting for us to at least go back and rehash some of the things that we talked about before to give us a working list moving forward. And so we've got some tasks in place. We don't want to be lost on how long it takes us to get to the next task, so we want to look at when we can actually do the meeting. I've talked to Mr. Chair and we are thinking that March would be a great month for us to have our follow-up meeting. It gives staff roughly 60 days to get some things in place and at least to start the ball to moving so that we can have at least some update by the end of the quarter. Any comments, thoughts, suggestions as it relates to having our next meeting towards the latter part of March?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, let me say that I do apologize that, you know, last year for the county commission, we were very busy here and we had other meetings with other counties and, and we had a lot of challenges that we had to take on. And Mr. Mayor, I do apologize and council members that we could not meet again last year, but this is a brand-new year and the ship is riding and we're all going in the same direction. So again, I apologize for not being able to make that happen.
Well, I, I think there's no apology necessary. I think we've all felt the pains of having to change leadership from administrative, from the administrator's standpoint. We felt it a couple times. And so, but I, I think with swift transition, having Terry be a fixture on, on both sides of this fence actually helps out a lot. We look forward to Mr. Folsen coming in, subject to the contract negotiations and being able to put us where we need to be. But, but I think having a, a year of transition for both the city and the county relates to leadership is, is really the, you know, the, the reason that, you know, we, we are where we are. But the good part is, we still have a heart to try to work together, to try to make some things come together. And so we thank you for your leadership during your chairmanship as well as we want to thank the county commission for the opportunity to continue to see if we can build relationships that are beneficial to all citizens in this community. And I think that's been the missing piece of this pie in this county for a long time. I think there's been a lot of territorialness as it relates to certain things, but just being able to sit at the table, to have the chamber here to participate, to have staff here who's already started working together in so many ways since we just started having conversations. Piggybacking off contracts is probably one of the greatest examples of that. And also looking at what we're doing from the permitting standpoint. Those are the things that have already come out of the collaborations thus far. So there hasn't been wasted time, there have been gained opportunities, and this time is just going to allow us to gain more and more of those.
Absolutely.
I yield to you, sir.
I was going to ask Mr. Suggs, is there a particular day at the end of March that, that we have open?
I'm trying to run through our calendar. I know we have our second and fourth Tuesdays that we meet and we have now started scheduling workshops on both of those days and not on our third Tuesday.
So would the fourth Tuesday be open?
I mean, if you, if, if the commission is wanting to do that, if you're willing to do it, our, our, the fourth Tuesday of March, we have our commission meeting with the 2:00 Transportation.
27.
That's the 27th?
Yep.
I mean, that's, it makes for an extremely long day, but it is, you know, you're already here if you'd like to consider doing that on the 27th and just go ahead and, and go straight from transportation to, to taking a break for dinner and back here at 6:00.
Pass that one to Mr. Pickens.
I would prefer to go ahead if we're going to do it. We're here all day on the, the fourth Tuesday to, to have it then, that, that evening. But I'm just one commissioner, so.
That's the 27th.
It is on the 27th.
The 27th at 6 o'clock.
27.
Are we fine with that, Betsy?
Your second, fourth meeting or the fourth Thursday is the 22nd, so you've got that whole week off.
Okay. Okay, then we'll make it the 27th, 6 o'clock. And if anything does come up to change that, please get with Mr. Suggs.
All right.
I have a request. Prior to that meeting, I know we have the minutes, but if we can get a, I guess, a general update as far as a synopsis of updates as they come in, so I think that'll save us a lot of time when we do come back and assemble. So even if in the between time, I know we're coming back in March, somewhere in February, if we can just get a status update via email on things that we have discussed, that way we'll, we're in the know. And like Commissioner Harvey said earlier, it'll kind of lessen us up getting beat up by the citizens when we can provide them up-to-date updates versus, you know, we'll get back with you or this was the last update and it's been from months ago. So if we can get kind of updates, not to micromanage, but just to stay in the loop of what's going on.
I'm good with that.
Very well. Closing comments as we continue. Mr. Suggs?
No, I just think it's a, I'm glad we were able to get back together. My apologies to those in the audience tonight and for some of those who couldn't make it with the shortened notice, but we had to start somewhere. We're back on track now, so we'll, we'll do better about getting the advertisements out. And I, and yes, I think as we move forward on some of these projects, we can put a, a synopsis together of where we're at and send those out in advance, so we'll have more information available to us and to be able to discuss that. But I just, I just think that we're heading in the right direction here and I think as long as we stay on track, we'll be okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay. Mr. Manning?
I'm good.
Mr. Holmes?
No comment.
Two lawyers, no comments?
My goodness.
Another lawyer up front took all the time.
You have me up 72 hours, I know, it's how many hours he's on.
That's right. Okay, Tim Smith's not here. Mr. Riggers? With that, we will close. We adjourned.
Mr. Turner, stand in the corner.
I had something to say.